For Monday, September 19th, 2011, 7 o'clock. I'll ask that you rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call to the Stavounis quorum.
Supervisor Tice?
Here.
Supervisor Gurman?
Here.
Chairman Zipper?
Here.
Supervisor Wolfle?
Here.
And Supervisor Stavounis?
We do have a quorum. Everyone is present. Meet and greet. I don't say any to our county sheriff's department. People here, although we do, and we will, switch back if someone from the department does show up. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to participate? I know Nancy, you're here for your item. You want to wait until then?
Sure.
She'd like to get moved up, well, in the agenda if possible.
I'm sorry?
She'd like to get moved up in the agenda if possible.
We'll get the word right away. The agenda has been properly noticed?
Yes, it has been.
Needing motion, then to a down.
Also moved.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Dan, to approve. Any explanations required? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it is approval of the minutes of board supervisors, August 22. Need a motion on that?
Approve the minutes.
Second.
It sounded like a voice from afar. Is it? Did you leave your voice up in Wasaki, or? Okay, motion and second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let us go to new business. It would be item number one, petition for a grant of variance. Nancy Ray, 4611 State Highway 42. Nancy is present tonight, and she wishes to make a comment. So, John, do you want to introduce the item, and then we'll allow Nancy to speak?
Yes, we had a petition for variance from Nancy Ray. At the planning commission level, we had a few questions. Linda had notified her. We called, and it just happened to be that they were out of town for that evening. And she called me on Sunday, and so I said, "Well, it'd be in your best interest to be here tonight to present it to the board." So...
Do you want to explain what the variance is about?
The variance, I still have a few questions, but the variance is about a deck that was on there, and was 16 by 5, and you want to make it 16 by 8, is that correct?
That is correct.
So they want to add another 3 feet out to the deck. The deck would protrude to the lot line. It'd be within the 50 foot. That's why they had to go for the variance. Her son, did you own the property at one time, the whole property? And then you subdivided, or you divided it, because your son owns the property all the way around it, correct?
The whole property was owned by my father.
Okay.
And then, when they set up the living trust, I took the 1.5 acres, and my son bought the rest of the property. So that's when the division of the whole property piece came about.
Not knowing that the 50-foot setbacks are anything?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, Nancy, I'll ask you to come up to the microphone, so we can record it as well as others be able to hear what your explanation of it.
John, could you make sure that the microphone is turned down?
It's on.
Okay.
That one is on?
Oh, that one?
Put the podium, please.
It's on. Can you hear me all? Okay.
Because the other, you know, it says this. In your petition to grant a variance to Kay Miller, it said that construct an 8-by-16 deck to replace a 5-by-16 porch, which made us a little confused, but that got straightened out later on, so... I'll let, I'll turn it over to you, and you can explain the, do you all have the sketch laying in front of you?
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so now the porch itself, you redid, right? Which is the square part?
I have not done anything. We took the stoop. That was my error by using that word porch. The porch has not gone anywhere. That's a part of the house.
Okay.
The 5-by-16 foot piece is a cement stoop. That was a part, that was the front of the porch. I don't know if I'm explaining that very well. Do you have a picture of the, do you all have? I'm not sure.
We have an overhead view.
Okay, I don't have that, okay.
And then we have this drawing here.
This picture here does show what was originally there.
Why don't you bring them up here?
You can see just the corner of it? What it was, it was an old, it wasn't connected to the building. Right here, you can see where this handrail is.
Okay.
It was just an old stone, field stone they poured. It wasn't connected to the house. Well, it was all cracking up and all falling apart. That's what was removed. We just want to put a deck in the place of where this was.
Okay, these are your...
It's actually what it is.
It's outside, and it's not enclosed.
Yeah, it was really bad shape.
It has three steps that go up to a doorway, and that enters the porch into the house.
Okay.
It's outside, and it's not enclosed. It's like a 3-foot by 16-foot across the front of the house. And it was a stoop that was added, a cement stoop. And that's what started to crack, and it's actually pulled away from the main entrance of the house. The water's getting down in there, and when I had the builder come out to look at it, to even add a deck of any size, he said, "We couldn't mount it to the house because it wasn't stable. It was deteriorating." So that's when people came to put it, they had to put a 2-inch face wall on that. After we took that old stoop out, he had to put a 2-inch face wall there for repair. And that's where it's at. Nothing more has been done. Because we didn't, we didn't meet the setback after I talked, I'm sorry, after I talked to Kay, it did not meet the setback. So I had to, she said that that was okay, because I was actually repairing the front of the house that was deteriorating. There were cracks in the wall, and cracks going down. Water was getting into the basement. So that's where that's at right now.
Right, but once you repaired that, where does this, the extra 3 feet come on? Because once you add the 3 feet, then it's not repair anymore.
We would be putting a deck on now, 5 feet, instead of 3 feet.
Maybe you have... I'm not understanding that.
It was a cap, a cement cap that was put on the front of the stone to keep us from carrying...
On the front of the foundation?
Yes.
So on this picture here, this was your porch, right? Trust here?
Yes.
And then where was your stoop?
Right here, right where the proposed deck is.
Okay, and that came out?
3 feet.
3 feet. Okay.
Just like this picture shows here. This is a little better picture right here. It's coming out.
Okay.
Where those chairs are sitting.
Now you want to come out to 5 feet?
Right.
Yeah, see, this is not longer there.
No, you want to come out 8. I thought they wanted to come out 8 feet, John.
You want to come out 8. You've got 5 now, and they want to come out 8.
Yes, okay, you want to come out another 1.
Total of 8, or 8 more?
Total of 8.
Okay. Yeah.
So they're adding 3. How many feet, how many feet?
It's 5 by 16.
You got to go down farther in the notes.
How many feet, how many feet are you now, at 5 feet, you're how close to the rear property line? At the existing?
32 feet.
32, so you want to make it 29 feet from the property line?
No, 32 feet would be the 8 feet now.
40 feet.
The existing lot line.
Where is, this is rather confusing.
I know it is.
So how many are you at 5 feet?
40?
You know what?
To the house, to the house, if you look at the sketch, have you got the sketch in front of you? Yeah, the sketch.
Just give me, just give me a number, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, so...
40 feet?
40 feet.
40 feet is to the back of the porch.
And that's 5, at 5-foot porch?
Hang on a minute. Is to the doorway of the porch, and then she wants to come out another 8 feet?
No.
To make it the 32 feet, which is the deck. That would be correct. Is that correct? Yeah.
So which lot line is in issue? This back lot line?
Yes, from the existing property. There's a driveway there, and it kind of runs... Would be over this way, to the, to the road.
This way.
Which is the, which, is this your son's house over here? Does he live near the regulation?
That's correct. That's on the other prop, that's his property.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's the driveway there. That's...
And then if you see those big trees, are the big trees there?
Yep.
Okay, the lot line, after we started measuring, we found out that the lot line, I thought, was the edge of the driveway, but it's actually the edge of the big tree, so it's back in almost 8 feet. That's where we were getting all messed up.
Okay.
And I can't do anything for changing his lot line. We tried, they were going to see if he could give us some, but then his setbacks for his building wouldn't be right. That's what happened.
So the final dimensions on this deck are 8 by 16, right?
Correct.
That is correct. Because I, see, what might be confusing there is when he was asking about this 5-foot. That is not, yeah, that's not there. What it would be, would be 8 feet from the exact, from the door, the threshold of the door to the end of the deck coming out, would be 8 feet wide. Well, the part that was confusing was when the petition for variance, it said to construct an 8-by-16 deck to replace a 5-by-16 porch.
I know.
That started off, then if you read over here, then you got an existing 5-by-16-foot porch, then you're going to a 12-by-16 thing, and then later on down here, you're going from a 12-by-16 to an 8-by-16. And I guess you can see why at the, at the plan commission, that's why we were confused on what the footages were. Yeah, see, the very beginning, we had, we wanted it bigger, okay? Right. But that was denied. It was, that wasn't going to work. That's why when we dropped it to the other dimensions, that's where it sounds like a lot of confusion on the paperwork. Because we went from a 12-foot by 17-foot is what we wanted, or 12 by 16. That wasn't going to work. That's why we dropped it down to 8 by 16. Does that make a little more sense now? So the existing one was 5 by 16, right? Correct, yes.
That's no longer there.
And it was just a stone, whole stoop.
Yeah, they're not extending from that. They're just replacing.
Basically, when you break everything down, all you're adding is 3 feet. Exactly. To the existing... About what it comes to, yes. And originally, what was there, yes. We would be adding, yes. Yeah.
I know, I, I know.
Yeah.
But it was non-conforming to begin with, right?
Well, it was grandfathered. It was conforming at one time, but it was grandfathered up until they separated everything. And then it was, or it was grandfathered after they separated everything, and then to build on.
Now, under new regs, it's, okay, it's a violation.
Yeah, it's been kind of confusing for us the whole week, too. I'm sure.
Do we have any kind of official notice that this is going to be handled by RPC or by Board of Adjustment?
I'm not sure.
Linda, did we get any notice from them?
Well, if the petition for variance, I think that would be RPC. The deadline for responding is October 4th, I believe?
No, it's not the...
October 6th.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, petition for grant of variance was, but I don't have that.
Oh, yes, boarding, Board of Adjustments, yes.
What is our response state? Do we have that?
Deadline for review by, at the town level is October 6th.
Okay, so we would be timely in taking it up tonight, so. Did you have anything else you wanted to add before we make our decision?
Um, no, I just wanted you to understand that it wasn't, we're adding the extra 3 feet just for a little bit of better entrance when we go up those steps to go into the house. The door now swings open right into the steps, so that was kind of the reason for those extra 3 feet. And it was just a little bit, you know, I wanted it to go along the length of the house. And one question that was asked by Kay was, "Why couldn't we move it to the left or the right, or relocate it to make it conform?" But to the right puts it facing the driveway, puts it in front of the basement door, and to the left is right in the driveway. And the north and south of the house doesn't have any entrances or exits, so we couldn't put it there. This is the only place that we could change it.
Well, I guess, I don't know, maybe, I can't speak for Kay, but, you know, the steps could be moved way over to the other side of the porch, too. You know, you could bring the steps up on the opposite side of the porch. You've got a 16-foot wide porch.
But there's no doorway there.
Well, you'd walk up on the porch, and then you could walk over to the doorway. You don't have to have the steps right in front of the doorway.
Oh, oh, okay.
You know, if you left it at the, if worse come to work, worse comes to worst, and you only got the 5 feet, you know, by the 16, you could move the steps to the other side if you're building brand-new.
Does she have the 5 feet?
I think what she's trying to say is, the existing old cement porch that was there, that was always the problem, trying to get out that door. It gave you no room to do anything there. But, see, we understand what you're saying. The way that this new deck would be, it would be moved over a couple feet from where the existing one was, and we're going to have the door swing the opposite way. So that gives us a better way to get in there. It always was a problem.
So that's, that I guess...
According to the drawing that I'm looking at, you would indicate that your steps are going to be incorporated in the deck now?
Yes, that's what the builder suggested.
So they would not be extending beyond?
They wouldn't be sticking out into the driveway.
Okay, are there any questions on the board?
Is there any advantage to having a deck over having a patio at grade?
I don't know what that means exactly.
Look, you had a porch slab.
Patio is, is at grade, at the grass level.
Oh, well, that is like 3 feet high, though, you know, to the, the entrance to the house.
That, no, that wouldn't work. That would be a big mound going up there. If I'm getting the right idea where you're going.
You come out of the house on your concrete porch, you walk down the steps, and you have your patio out here now, rather than a deck.
Okay, but maybe what you don't understand is this cement old is gone now. That's not there anymore. Just a flat wall there now, in our entrance to come in.
It drops 2 feet. It just drops the 2 and 1/2 feet.
Yeah, that's what, what the deal is there now.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, are you prepared to take some action on this, or?
I would make a motion to the RPC to...
The Board of, BOA would be the Board of Adjustments.
I would make a motion to recommend to the Board of Adjustments that we approve the 8-by-16 deck as drawn.
And allow a 32, is that the 32-foot setback?
Allow, yes, allow the 32-foot setback.
All right, there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll send it on.
Thank you, gentlemen. I did not, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Alan.
I appreciate it.
Well...
Thank you much. Thank you.
What is Alan's last name?
The clerk will send a letter to them, and they'll set it up for their hearing.
Okay, thank you.
What was Alan's last name? Oh, yes, of course. Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Okay, let's go on. We have financial reports for August 2011, and the budget versus the actual accounts. The, with the balances and transactions. Do we have any questions on those?
Will they approve the financial report?
You're welcome to stay. You know, we'll be here for a little while.
You can go. Go that way?
Yeah.
Either way.
Either way, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Good night.
We're only one of 3 places to go. Oh, yeah.
Okay, do we have any questions on any of the number 9 approval? Oh, it's number 8 now.
Who seconded the motion?
I'll second that. I think Chuck made the motion.
Yes, that part I got.
Where was the motion?
Motion to approve financial report.
Okay, and Tom was the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's carried. Let's go on to the approval of Voucher's Bill's claims for August, September 2011.
Will we approve the Voucher's bill and claims? I'll second that.
Motion by Chuck, the seconded by Tom. Did we have an answer to your question?
Yes.
Yes, it's the new format.
All right.
Pay attention to...
Any further questions or comments? Hearing, now all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's carried. Do we have any oral committee reports or minutes? No oral reports, we can go on to the other commission minutes. Package should have included park and rec for July 13, and the plant commission of June 22, and also the coastal byway council minutes of July...
Is that our last meeting, John? 22nd of June?
No, we just had one the other day.
Yeah, we just had one the other day.
Getting smart.
Should have your meetings more frequently, John.
Yeah, okay.
I thought I read the dates correctly, all right. All right, well, except and place them on file after no other snide remark, I mean, other remark.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Pending business, farmland preservation and text amendments, the plant commission. John, did you bring anything forward on that?
Um, yeah, we looked at them. We still have to look at them a little bit more. Um, farmland preservation.
They're trying to incorporate what? Prime ag or which one?
As far as we understand, yeah, it's, no, the exclusive ag, we already took care of. The exclusive ag, EA, which was exclusive ag, we didn't have any in the town, so we decided two meetings ago that we would not go for that, so...
It'd be a June meeting?
That's, it's June meeting, yes. Um, the text amendments, we need more time to look at, so, um, and if, we're going to have a meeting in October, so maybe everybody could show up then, and we could get a better handle on the farmland preservation and the text amendments, so.
Good carry. Tom, did you have anything to, no, I don't have any comments or questions. Anyone else have a comment on farmland preservation or the text amendments? Item number 2 under pending business would be the shower road status report. If you wrote, if you read my letter that I wrote to Tony Kniffer, who was actually part of the management group at Whitefish Dunes, I met with him September 1st, and it does appear like the DNR would also like to see shower road improved. And Tony was going to act on our behalf and submit a request to the DNR, and I don't remember which, where it's going to head. However, with that would be a request for money, money in a share cost. And our proposed would be to use the local route and road improvement monies with the DOT and the Door County Parks Department, either through an in-kind or a cash dollar, with our own town of Sebastopol monies, and the possibility of DNR to go along with perhaps an in-kind or a contribution from the Door County Highway Department to at least incorporate for this year remodel of shower road to the park, Cave Point Park. Uh, the intention is, and brought forward in my meeting with the DNR, was a parking problem on the north end of the park. And if sufficient monies do come about yet this year, we'll probably work on that. But there is a rather large reconstruction that needs to be done on the north end. Part of my informational letter to you is also the fact that the dollar amount that we had anticipated spending needed to be adjusted solely because, if you remember, the local road improvement program, and this would be shown in the letter from Commissioner Kalogia of the Highway Department, part of that grant for us to use the trip money, or local road improvement program, what it should be, we had to go out and acquire blackup, or vituminous, or whatever you would like to call it. And it came in at $47.45 per ton. And this is quite contrary to what the County of Door can produce at their odd mix plant. And their previous indicator was that they could do it at $39, as they produce it for others. However, with the $47.45, it reduced our amount of our tonnage that we were able to acquire for the same dollar amount. Everything else has gone up, I guess their product as well. Northeast asphalt was the only bidder, and we do have to honor that request. We cannot do it with anyone else.
We're looking at roughly having, if, if the DNR throws in 20, we'd have 100 grand?
It's going to be 100 or a little bit better.
So if we were going to do the rest...
If we go all the way.
All the way, right.
Okay.
I will tell you one thing.
If you take a trip up there, you can see that north of the park, the elevation is higher on the left going easterly. So they will have to go into that, either bring it up on level, or else bring some of it out and take it out and truck it around, so.
We had the bike, century bike race there, too, there was bikers there. There was people that were trying to get in and out of there. And there was room for one vehicle with them parked on both sides, and there wasn't room for a bicycle and one vehicle, so. It was...
Well, it's definitely in need of repair, and the parks are ready to cooperate anyway, the DNR.
Didn't it sound originally, though, like there might be even additional funding from them, from the scale that contacted Linda?
There were 2 different funds.
Oh, there are.
And they might, if those funds are not available this year for 2011, he would resummit for 2012. So we would only go to the park this time, and then come back and address it next time again.
I got you.
Okay? Is that your understanding as well, Linda?
Yes, 2 separate, separate DNR funding sources.
The easier dollar amount that coming would have been where Tony is headed, and the other one would take a little bit longer to even have it approved.
Oh, okay.
Can you step back to the other one? I missed a note that I had written down for the farmland preservation. We did have a motion from the plant commission to support the farmland preservation map as shown in the January 11th map, as long as it doesn't prohibit future development and rezoning opportunities. But we did, we did table the text amendment for, to look at again, so.
All right, you can all, we can handle that the next time around.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on shower?
If we did the whole shower road, we're looking like 156, almost?
Quite close, yes. And I think what you need to do is go to the north end of Cave Point, and just take a look. What you see there is a very narrow road.
Try and get 2 vehicles side by side down there.
Yeah, and we have requirements... Yeah, and we have requirements, anything we, we rebuild needs to be eighteen feet of travel surface with two foot shoulders either side. And the problem is, we can't get it unless we do it, and then elevation-wise, on the left side, it's much higher than the other. I don't know if we're gonna peel that off and fill in. We do have the approval of the DNR, and, uh, we're now in agreement that we do have a fifty-foot right away, so we'll be able to place that in there. Uh, biggest problem that we do have is that it has been generating a lot of, uh, calls, not only to the county park system, but also to the, um, DNR at Whitefoot Dunes, so. We'll try to make.
Do you have any idea what the estimate would be, our cost?
Our cost?
Twenty thousand.
For what?
Yeah, for this project.
Well, we allocated twenty. I don't believe we would probably go another twenty. I think our initial costs were sixty-one or something like that, or fifty-seven for the county, but that all got thrown out of whack once the bids came in for the.
Yeah, two different bids.
Pardon me?
That's where we got the two different bids.
Yeah.
From northeast and the county.
Yeah, we have to go out and, we have to go in and buy product. I think it's within our budget of dollars. And if that be the driving force, then I would suggest that we only go to the park this year and come back. We're getting to the point now at, uh, looking at the fifteenth of October being our due date, we're gonna have to spin some tires to get it all accomplished, so. Any other questions? Okay, the dog leash ordinance. Although the information has been forthcoming, and Linda has been keeping a log as to where the dog leash requests or comments are coming from. I don't know if you're receiving them at your house on via the email or telephone call. I believe I've only had one phone call. I asked for an email. And that was, uh, sent to me and shared it with Linda before. Linda has received a couple at the town level here that she's forwarded to us. I think the approach that we're taking right now is let's, uh, perhaps allow some common sense to dictate which way we go. We've, uh, gone to review it. Uh, the first time around, we did have a hearing on it, and for us to go back and do it again would require another hearing. We do have a, a few problems with amending the ordinance as we have it now, and that we would have to take up some enforcement of that ordinance, and, uh, without contacting our attorney. I think part of the problem is that we would either need to expand the authority of our so-called animal control officer to include this, and not only pick up dogs or strays or cats, whatever the case is. I match your, uh, suggestion, and whichever way you'd like to pursue it, I noticed from the, from the beginning of all this, whether or not it would be a lease or no lease law, that a whole bunch of the controversy with it has subsided, so maybe we can buy some time before we actually have to go back and take a hard look at it. I don't, I have not checked with the other members of the board. But on first blush, anyway, I would, I would almost think that it's gonna be a, a very close call if we abolish the, uh, the lease law as we have it. But to be in compliance with the state law, we either need to be, they need to be under control or leased, and, uh, we can be more restrictive, but we cannot be any less restrictive. And I think we all have that same kind of idea or thought. And I'll go to Chuck for just a minute here, because Chuck was the author of the ordinance, so why don't we listen to what you got in mind?
The ordinance was in the making for almost two years. And there were three or four public meetings, and nobody had problems with them. I has, as of yet, to receive a call on the change even. So I don't see it as a problem. We, as a board, have already agreed not to enforce that part of the ordinance. I can't see spending any money redoing this ordinance and publishing it again, holding a public meeting again at this point. If, if we're not going to enforce it, we're not going to enforce it. I don't see it as a conflict between the other ordinances. I would say let it sit. I'm sure somewhere along the line, we will bring these ordinances back for review a year or two from now, and we can correct the problem at that time if anybody actually foresees it as a problem.
Well, we have, we have two different ordinances. And they both pertain to the same, one paragraph pertains to the same issue, and the issue is whether or not a dog is under control or on a leash when off premises, on his premises, right?
The first ordinance has to do with all animals.
Right.
The second ordinance has to do with dogs only.
Right, but dogs only does fall under all animals.
Dogs are under all animals, correct?
So.
But you were looking at two different ordinances.
Correct.
So if you have one ordinance that says you need a leash, that's what the ordinance says.
Right.
The other one does not have to say it. The other one does not say you don't need one. So the leash law, in effect, is there, and it would be enforceable if we chose to do it.
Well, under.
But it also is on all animals. It's not just on dogs.
Right, right, but we're, we're looking at dogs. So if I, if I have my dog loose and we call the, uh, the dog officer, and he wants to enforce the ordinance, which one is he gonna enforce?
The more strict one.
Well, then why have the less strict one in, on the books then? I mean, you should only have one to cover it. Uh, the more strict one doesn't make sense to me. Uh, I would, I would, I would argue that issue in court. Under this ordinance, I'm safe as long as my dog is under control. Under this ordinance, uh, it's gotta be on a leash. Now, they're both saying two different things, yet they both pertain to the same issue. So what you're saying is, any animal that goes off of your property, you have to have a leash on?
That's what the ordinance says today, right?
So if you have an ostrich, a camel, or anything, you have to have a leash on it.
Right, or put it in a cage.
So.
What was the third option?
Why in the other ordinance, why do we have a single ordinance for just dogs? There's cats out there, there's mountain lions, there's goats, there's sheep, there's everything else, you know, that can bite, or, you know. I guess it's, you know, there's a lot of feral cats out there, but nobody ever brings up anything about feral cats.
Well, what we do do with the feral cats, we, we, uh, have our animal control officer go out and pick them up, and first time around, we spent the dollars, and then with the understanding that if we came back a second time, and they would pick up the dollar, I don't know what the capture was on the first one, but I think it was eighteen or twenty. And the second time around was thirteen or fourteen, and yes, indeed, they were billed by the, by Linda, and they paid.
'Cause there's a vast interpretation between if you have an animal, a dog on a leash, or, and that's pretty cut and dried, but as comment was to our last board meeting, they said that more people have gotten bitten by a dog on the leash, which I don't understand, and I didn't have the stats to back it, but versus a dog under control, which opens it up to a lot of different interpretations.
Let me throw my two cents into, I, I think when we looked at the control of animals, since we had an ordinance that specifically addressed dogs, my impression was, we were fine with it. I think when you get inside it and reread it and say, "Control of animals includes dogs", it creates a conflict, and unfortunately, in, in our neck of the woods, Tom, John, and mine, we have an individual that's constantly stirring the pot. And, uh, as a result of that, although you may not have received any emails, you're welcome to come to my house, and I'll share many of the conversations that I've had, so. I think it, it's appropriate that we clarify it, and we have one ordinance that deals with dogs. And whatever's the simplest way to do that, whether we just delete the word "dog" from "control of animals", or whatever the, whatever's the easiest route to take, we should have just one that says.
There wouldn't be no easy route, because as you go through the whole ordinance, then the name "dog" or word "dog" comes up probably thirty-five, forty times in each one of those ordinances, so.
But you know, too, on the other hand.
You're changing the body of, of both ordinances considerably by, by just trying to change one word.
But on the other hand, you can't just say that it's in our neck of the woods, because we are making decisions for the whole town of Sebastopol, so.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not disagreeing, I'm simply saying that, that the topic keeps coming up.
That's true.
From our neck of the woods, because of an individual who's stirring the pot.
Correct. And there has been a lot of emails saying, "Take me off your".
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
No, I don't disagree at all. I realize we're doing it for the, but no one else within the township has commented, and so while this continues to go.
I think what we can do is, uh, you know, it's good for us to have this discussion, but we do have some, uh, items that we need to address. The, our attorney reviewed all the ordinances that we did have. Correct?
Correct.
And, um, he didn't find any problem with it. The only problem that we do have, well, an additional problem that we do have, is who's gonna enforce it, and then what is it gonna cost for that enforcement? If it were on a county ordinance or state ordinance, the, uh, the cost of prosecution goes with either the state or the county. If it's a town ordinance, it would be our cost to prosecute. And normally, the first time around, on a, if you're guilty or not guilty, you're gonna challenge the law in essence, and that might require more time in the court. Allow me, till next meeting, I'll contact, uh, our attorney as much as I don't wanna rock up any more dollar bills on this to find out his take on it and see if there's any kind of, uh, similarity in what the county and the state have in total with what we are trying to do, and perhaps allow the sheriff or wild, or an animal, maybe the DNR would get involved, I don't know. So I can, uh, I can find out if we, uh.
We've already said we're not gonna do enforcement, so why?
Well, maybe some people that are rocking the boat wanna donate some money to enforce this. What, what does it take to make an amendment to the ordinance? Do you still need a hearing, a full hearing, or can you just make a, an amendment? Because if we, if we can make an amendment, I would propose that we strike the leash and use conforming language and say that a dog needs to be under control. That conforms with the state statute, that probably confirms, conforms with the county statute. So why not be in, in line with everybody else and, and use "under control"? I mean, a dog off the leash running around is not under control. You know, it's kinda, I don't know, double entendre, whatever that means.
Well, you are correct. I think what we should do here is pass those, uh, uh, suggestions on to Randy and, uh, either delete or amend
Yeah.
in what would be the best process and bring it back.
Yeah, maybe you can suggest a process.
And whether or not we have to go into ordinance, uh, to a hearing on the ordinance, we could do it, you know, ten or fifteen minutes before our next meeting as well, so.
I mean, I, I would rather see us spend our money, if we're gonna spend money for enforcement, to try and take care of the, some of the building issues that we have, that the eyesore things, than dedicate it to chasing down a dog or a cat, whatever.
Yeah.
That being said.
Okay, by consensus, then, will we just lay this over for next meeting, and I'll, uh, make the contact with the, uh, the legal beagle and see where we at.
Sounds like a plan.
New business, discussion and action, the grant of variance has already been taken care of. Requirement to establish an employee grievance procedure, we need action on it. If you read your information as supplied, by Linda, via the network of Wisconsin Towns Association Attorney, you will find out that we do need to come up with the procedure, and it has to be in place by October one. Meaning that today is September nineteenth, it doesn't give us much time to do it. So if you read that, and you have any questions, now would be the time to ask. Otherwise, we can drop down into the resolution and discuss it at that point.
Yeah, I suggest we get down to the resolution portion of it and discuss it then.
All right, let's move on into town hall, the, um, widen of the driveway, kind of an FYI, the included in your packet was the guesstimate of costs from the Highway Department. It's here because we didn't want anyone on the board, or we wanted the community to be involved. We've had a problem with the complaints coming to, uh, Linda mostly, and to me, and I'm sure others, about the obstacle course that you need to do is get through to the left and to the north side of the building. And also, uh, how many times has somebody targeted the rock that was in place, and whether or not it should not be removed? So at the encouragement of Dan and, uh, Linda, uh, Thad Ash was contacted to come out and take a look at it, although our first ambition was to widen perhaps only a four foot wide to the south. And the total width from where that, uh, rock is out to the shoulder of the road. Uh, when Thad was here, and I don't have the exact measurements, did it go to nine feet, nine and a half feet wide?
Eight or nine, I think.
And fifty-eight feet long?
Yeah, to, to basically remove that island completely.
So it would, uh, it would be to remove that stone wherever, you know, put it back or put it further to the south. And also, uh, if you can envision the sprit, split rail fences, uh, to the north, uh, just that, that wide turn on the left. The radius would be improved there a little bit, so it'd be an easier cut. So with that in mind, um, the cost for that came in at twenty-five thirty. I talked to, uh, Thad at, uh, about noon today. He doesn't anticipate getting on to that project until sometime in second week of Oc- October, perhaps. But he thought he could get it done yet this year. It would be the removal of the product that's there, bringing in some break around to make sure we had a decent base, and then add gravel and then overlay it. And hopefully, that'll take care of the problem.
Is there any, is there any, uh, impervious, uh, considerations that we're putting too much impervious, uh?
No, I think the entire lot is okay. We did have, the only restriction we needed to meet was a thirty-five with, with the zoning and a permit by the state, and we don't have the permit back yet, but I was assured that it's, uh, on its way and gonna be approved, so.
Yeah, uh, excuse, just a little off the subject, uh,
Oh, well.
but pertinent, if we, if we feel.
If we repaint our doors, Tom.
If we repaint, conform to the environmental requirements, we can get mitigation points against putting in more impervious property. we can get mitigation points against putting in more impervious property. What I'm thinking about is, let's say we want to put a satellite fire station here. Will that have any impact on the impervious amount of property we have?
Well, it probably would have, but once they involve the park as one full lot, then we have enough green space.
Okay, so we can use that property as...
I believe that's a good point you brought up. That's why we did it all in one.
Yep. So we've got a couple of points or questions. There is a sewer manhole out there somewhere. Have that taken into account that we will not be blacktopping over top of that?
I don't think there's a manhole tuck in that area that I'm aware of.
I think, yeah, I think it's more towards the telephone pole when Tony Gazza was here that time.
I don't think there's...
Well, it's out there somewhere.
Yeah, I don't think it's anywhere in that area. And if we did, we'd leave the hole open.
No, you wouldn't.
Well, that'd be good.
Just for dogs, running loose dogs.
Well, it'd be a good place to put a cat.
We should be sure the highway department is aware that there are sewer lines out there.
We wouldn't want to lose one of the highway department people.
We have this kiosk supposedly through Door County Coastal Byways. Is it prudent to change this parking lot entrance at this point? Or should we be looking at where are we going to incorporate this into the property? And would there be some other changes we may want to do?
No, maybe, and no.
What is the state regulations on having a second entrance to this area here?
That we don't know.
What is the distance between...
I don't think they can stop us because there was three separate lots here that were already established, correct?
Yes.
When we bought the place, so I would...
But we're one parcel now.
Well, we're one parcel with the park, so if you look at, you know, how much footage is between each one, I'm sure we can get another driveway for a satellite fire station.
What did take place is we, I don't remember who we were, but somehow we looked at a second entrance to come in from the south and perhaps even have it as an in and the other would be an exit. And that would have been a little more expensive. And what we're doing here is trying to be user-friendly without spending a ton of dollars. And if we get any kind of a kiosk, and I wouldn't believe that we can either... In either respect, if you're looking for something you drive up to to take a look at, or is it something you want to physically get out and take a look at, or...
Well, I've been kicking some ideas around, trying to lay them out on the property and that. Haven't talked with Dan yet on it as far as property management goes. But my take would be you'd have the driveway in the parking lot. You'd get out and you'd go into it like a park. Look at the kiosk. We were talking about incorporating our antique grader in there and, you know, anything else to make kind of an inviting little park area where the people could come and get their information and that. And in reality, the only place we have is the lot to the south there.
I wonder if that may not be the worst...
That's our satellite station for the fire department.
Yeah, well, we can look at that also.
You don't want that in the front of a fire station where if you have ten people sitting there and you got a fire, you're going to find them all and tell them, "Oh, excuse me, can you move your vehicle so I can get this fire truck out of here?"
If we have ten people looking at the kiosk in front of our fire station, we will hold up any fire department for them to look and book a hotel room.
No, we won't.
Well, the first question, ask them if they have any experience in fighting fires and throw them on the truck and take them out.
Chuck, what about the, just, you know, not having talked about it, but the kiosk? What about the south lot down by the park entrance? Where we have land where we could put a kiosk, where people could drive in and we could do the double duty of posting our public notices on one side and information...
You'd have to make a little parking area there, that's right.
One of the possibilities.
I mean, to me, that...
And then at Christmas time, the Christmas lights will be lit up.
Absolutely. Makes it very inviting.
But we have to make a little parking area for, I don't know, a dozen cars, right?
But there was a driveway there, too.
That would be a good place for it.
So, I don't know.
Blacktop the south wall field.
Okay, I can tell you as much, they're going to be here the second week in October, so if you have something...
Oh, no, we're not. Not even the seventh.
They are.
Oh, okay.
My one concern is if you go the route you're talking here right now, you lose the ability to put anything in that little grassy area between the school and us.
We're not going to trim that much, are we? That's not going to...
As far as the front, moving the red boulder and that, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we're all right from what we're going to do. I think the kiosk thing, it's legitimate. We have to figure out where we're going to go with it because I think it can do double duty. But we're not going to change the radius out there. You could do it out there.
How does a kiosk get in to widen a driveway?
Well, just, we're talking about the kiosk and then the backside.
The extension to the south of the road, highway. So that much would be added. This would be about eight and a half or nine wide. And this is fifty-eight feet. The rock that sits here and everybody backs over, probably be relocated this way or else over here.
If you move it out that way, you'll be in a...
This fence right now kind of sits like so. So we're going to move that fence back and then take this little sliver out.
Yeah, that's not much of a... But it'll do what we want it to do.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion or a rock?
Well, I wanted everybody to be aware of it. We... It appears like we do have the money in our maintenance account that we'll be able to sponsor.
Under road or road maintenance, right?
All right, unless I hear differently, I'll... That's where we'll head with this one. Okay, Resolution 7, 2011 TV, in support of Door County Land Trust. This is backed due to the fact that we had unanimously approved it previously at our last meeting and they wanted a resolution in support of that action. So it's for you tonight to pass the resolution.
My motion that we pass Resolution Number 7, 2011 TV, in support of Door County Land Trust purchase of Bodwin Properties.
I'll second that.
Okay, are there any questions, comments? All in favor, signify and say a no.
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, and again unanimously supported. There is a original copy going around. Please fix your signature to it. And Linda will make sure that gets forwarded to the land trust in order to get that information to Madison. Resolution Number 8, 2011, the adoption of the employee grievance procedure. If you read with interest the other side of it. Linda, you were instrumental in getting this all together. Do you want to give us an update as far as where we're at, what kind of costs we might incur?
Well, it came about as a result of the budget repair bill with the changes to the bargaining rights. So they thought that they needed to develop a grievance procedure to have in place that would comply with Wisconsin Act 10. I have talked with a couple of the other clerks who are also looking at this resolution either tonight or at their upcoming board meetings. We did have some discussion on, I guess, the main thing up, or the main thing that needs to be decided, is a grievance hearing officer, which is in the procedure, page one of the employee grievance procedure, directly behind the resolution. An impartial hearing officer must be selected. There was some discussion on using the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission. They are not a government entity. They are an individual company based in Madison. I did talk with an attorney, Peter Davis, there. And they would charge a flat fee of $800 with the agreement that it would be shared equally between the employer and the employee. So shared equally between the parties. $800 seems to be the going rate because at about 4:30 this afternoon, Attorney Randy Nesbit called and he had just finished talking with Grant Thomas, Door County Corporation Counsel. And they had mentioned a retired attorney, a retired judge from Winnebago County, Robert Hawley, who is also willing to act as an impartial hearing officer for the same rate, $800 per day. Both of those include travel. So we need to decide who our hearing officer is going to be. And it is a resolution and it can always be changed if, for some reason, you had become unhappy with the selection.
Does the hearing officer have to be a public...
No.
Individual or an attorney? Could be...
Retired State Patrol officer.
Just a resident.
It could be the videographer.
Seems to me that $800 is...
The main point is that he's impartial.
The only problem is it cannot be a... Well, what was the particular here? Cannot be a...
He has to be impartial and outside independent person to serve. In other words, someone who is not employed by the municipality. Some suggestions were a local attorney, a retired judge, a human resource director. The Wisconsin, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, of which would include towns, did give this point, the safest course is to continue to select an independent labor arbitrator or staff member, and they recommended the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission.
An answer to your question, Tom, it could be anyone who's got quasi-legal background and be able to write or conduct a hearing and justify the decision, so... We do have some military people that we talked about, but not two in our community that might be...
So if we adopt this, we have to have an agent on hand? Or if we can adopt this without an agent, and then if we need one, we can find one, or...
We do have to identify it tonight.
Correct.
But if we do the WERC and then it has to be in concert with the grieving party because we're sharing the cost.
Okay.
And if you don't agree that you want to be heard by WERC, it'd be to our benefit and yours, that we go out and solicit someone else. So maybe at that point, we could go to find a second. I believe on the county issue, they were going to set up three. I don't think we have to go that far, but... But WERC would give us an opportunity to pick from a handful of people on the list.
I think you said they would have at least five. And would only come into play once somebody has filed a grievance. So as long as no one files a grievance, it just sits there. Once somebody files a grievance, we would notify our hearing officer. They would set it for a hearing probably at the town hall here.
And the cost of the hearing and everything else is going to be divided by the grievant hand or the person filing the grievance, yeah? So in order to answer your question, yes, we do. So we should perhaps insert WERC on, I don't have a line, but in section two.
Come back and just re-clarify questions. So if we set them in this document and one of our thirty or forty employees comes forward with a grievance...
Wow.
An employee comes forward with a grievance. And at that point in time, we decide whether or not the employee and the board want to use this group or at that time, we could select somebody else.
We will go through WERC and select... We would strike until we all agree on one of five numbers.
To start with, your grievance hopefully can be worked out between the employer and the employee.
I want to agree. This is hard on me. I just, this just looks to me like an opportunity for someone to step in and make outrageous amounts of money. $800 for an issue, that's my only point.
But it's taking the place of the former collective bargaining...
Pardon me?
It's taking the place of what was formerly on the books under collective bargaining. So you need some type of procedure in place for an employee who might have a grievance, so...
I'm fine with the procedure and all that. I have no issue with any of that. And I'm just simply saying the selection of them says to me, it's like, it just seems like an inordinate amount of money to hear a grievance, $800. I mean, we have retired judges, retired attorneys, we have all kinds of people that could be impartial that I would say we'd be fine to use. I just don't know if I want to put somebody in that's going to charge me $800 or $400 apiece.
Well, I'm not sure that you would...
Put your mind at ease, the retiring judge would do it for the singer mountains.
Right. I'm not sure that you're going to find a retired attorney or a retired judge who will do it for less than $200 an hour.
That's okay.
I mean, $250 is the going...
Is that with mileage and hotel and meal still?
This is travel included.
Oh, travel included.
Travel included.
And if they have to stay overnight, that's included, too?
Then that changes everything.
As far as cost goes, that $800 is today is their price. I think in that paragraph, we probably have to include some kind of clause that says whatever they're charging at that time.
Or you could say a flat fee of $800 or as negotiated between the parties, something like that.
That could be pretty expensive.
Well, if we're negotiating, we'd have to agree to it, so. And so, I mean, the employee doesn't want to have to pay exorbitant costs either, so...
Depending on the grievance, I mean, it could go either way. They could end up paying the whole bill.
Well, it's shared, it says what I mean.
It says shared.
Payment upfront, either way, whether it's the retired judge or the WERC.
Let's put in the $800 and then the event we can't cover it with the vehicle, we'll have to come back and revisit and go to ten or...
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's a good way to do it. Make it an $800 flat fee. If it exceeds that, then we have to go in for our own deliberation.
This is like the AODA assessment that every person gets in the county. It's like the guy that does that is just standing back or going, "Oh, really? Another one?"
Interlock system.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's incorporate in the resolution the WERC in the first portion of it and also the last page of it would be the $800 figure. And if that dollar amount exceeds what we've established, we'll have to come back. In addition to it, we do have a grievant form that needs to be filed and then the response, and I believe that the decision form. And within ten days of supervisor's written response, it appeals to the town board with the town clerk. So there's enough avenues to be explored here.
And there is a differentiation between an elected official in municipality and an employee, correct?
Or an appointed one.
Or an appointed one.
Yeah, that we don't know. Okay, do we have a motion and a second on this one, Linda?
Who made the motion to accept or approve it?
I'll make the motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further questions, comments? Hearing done, all in favor, signify or say no.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, should be heading on your way for a signature there.
Yeah, I think it's all my signature.
The grievances can be filed till the ink is dry.
Yeah. It's amazing how we got all the signatures.
Isn't that something? Correspondents, subject to future agenda item if required. Correspondents, did you find anything in there that was of particular interest? You know, the fire department had a very active month of June.
And I'd like to see on the water rescue, they did save the person?
They did?
They did save the person. He was over a quarter of a mile away from the wave runner, so...
All right.
Yeah, I will, that's a good point. I will formally commend the fire department for doing a good job in that instance.
Correct. Well, in all the incidents, but that one in particular.
Good job, Tim, wherever you are.
And secondarily, the clerk was the eyewitness to the roadside burning at Old County...
Yes, I was.
Old Highway Road.
Old Highway Road on last Saturday.
And she had nothing but praise for the Stridney Bay Fire Department. How quickly they did respond and put the burning grass out. August permits and.
Streets signs go.
Anybody is interested in the NACO prescription discount card program, it's available through the county of Door, it applies should you not have any insurance or if you don't have very good coverage with the insurance you do have. Public education discussion meeting and planning and zoning September twenty-nine, on Thursday, I don't know, is somebody going to be there?
Yeah, John.
That does cover farmland preservation too, so I plan to go and.
Oh, great.
Some of the other plan commissioners, I think, plan to go.
Yeah, we'd like to have somebody to really recap the minutes on the.
Yeah, I'd like to have somebody, we talked about it earlier with John, I'd like to have someone come back and do a presentation to all of us, someone who are familiar with what's going on, because we had that fire committee meeting that night at seven, so that kind of a little bit of a conflict.
Okay, and then we do have some managed forest law and Department of Revenue, their new road signs will now be in a waiting position, so we don't have to go for the nine inch and the three in lowercase, until sometime when they resurrect it. Anyone is interested, we do have the Walker Road Improvement Program, information meeting October five at the highways at one o'clock in the afternoon. And then we did have the ordinance, number twenty-eleven on the zoning text amendment, SF Ten zoning district road cut back down alleys, and at your desk tonight should have been, correspondence from the Door County Humane Society on the backside indicating that those that they captured in our town showed nine dogs and seven cats.
Now, one cat didn't have a leash, I understand.
Year-to-date sixteen, fifteen dollar a day caretaking charge, came in the nineteen hundred and twenty dollars and tonight we have approved a stifle of two thousand dollars for their use. Do we have anything else for the good of mankind here? The announcements then would be the Fire Rescue Services Committee on September twenty-nine at five-thirty, Historical Society, yeah, we should perhaps have a update from our clerk on the response of your people to your first historical presentation.
Yes, the debut of the Sebastopol Historical Society was quite a success, we had over eighty people show up for our first presentation on the Basford family and Charles Basford, Betty Basford Propsum and Patty Bell and some of the other relatives, they did an excellent job with a video presentation, some old time photos, we were really impressed with the turnout, so it's going to be a hard act to follow.
And we, we as a committee meeting next door can attest to the fact that there were a lot of cars.
Standing room only.
A question on the fire services on Thursday, is that five-thirty, correct?
No, it's seven o'clock, does it say five-thirty here?
It's seven, Tom.
Okay, seven P M.
Yeah, seven P M, five-thirty is the, is the planning thing, yep, that's, good catch, John, it should be.
It's five-thirty?
Seven o'clock.
Both, both immediately.
It is seven, it says here, five-thirty.
Okay.
But it should say seven P M.
Okay, the work session then is Thursday, October sixth at six, Park and Rec Board Tuesday, October eleventh at six P M. The towns convention is in Green Bay, August, October twenty-three, twenty-six and our next board supervisor meeting, October twenty-four at seven P M. Do we have any agenda items for next time around outside of the dog lease?
We're going to have a meeting the nineteenth of October for the plan commission, so you could bring the text amendments back and, like I said, the farmland preservation we already approved, so.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Motion would be in order to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned.